Twenty-eight, roll call. Ashley Tyler here. Lee Perryman, your Tiffany Nix.
Here.
Nate Brewer.
Here.
Laurie.
Here.
Mayor is here. We have an indication of work session. Stand for please. Please wait.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite in justice for all.
All right, in place of, or before the mayor gives his report, I'm gonna give it to Steve, and we've got some groups of kids to honor their achievements.
Yes, we do, and I'm gonna bring them in team by team, cause there's a lot of them. Coach wants to say it first.
And these are team and what your accomplishment was, if you don't mind.
Four-year-olds, uh, girls, state soccer champion. They went on stage and represented as well. They scored twenty goals and gave up two.
Wow.
They did well. And undefeated in district, so they joined the two tournaments, scored twenty-eight goals and gave up three. Represented as well. Uh, this is Bailey Malone.
I'll just walk down and then we'll take a picture and listen.
Randy Gaspar. Lancy Morris. Mackenzie Cooper. Sidney Carter. Valeria Malaki. Gading Mintz. Penney.
Penley and Clay Marantz.
Georgia Maye Welch. Meredith Thel. Natalie Perez. Gina Holchekris. Lexi Lucas.
Congrats, y'all.
I gotta fix my plate and then.
I know Steve's probably heard the cats out there, so be patient.
This is our ten U tackle football team. Um, they won it all this year, and they ended up being faithful in the championship. And as you can see, there are lots of them, so we're not gonna do this for them. Like I was saying, guys, this is our ten U tackle football team. Uh, they went five and oh this year as well, undefeated, had a great, great season, a lot of hard work and dedication, and y'all give them a round of applause.
As you said, we would like for you guys to recognize them by name. It's their biggest big deal.
Marty right there.
Let's do it, Marty.
Come on, Marty, just point name.
My name is Lena, and I play wide receiver.
My name is Porter, and I play offensive guard.
My name is DJ, and I play receiver.
Be glad how many words.
Yes, thank you.
My name is McKenna, and I play center.
My name is Jerson, I play quarterback.
My name is McCollum, and I play defense.
My name is Kett, I play defense.
Yes, sir.
My name is Ellen, and I play strong safety.
All right.
I say everybody, they're gonna be y'all. Picture straight. Yeah, show the boy, hey. On the ring.
On the ring, on the line.
Thank y'all.
Good job, y'all. Coach Morten, you take y'all with Matt, y'all. Y'all born in Matt, y'all, love y'all. What's up, buddy? How you doing? Love you.
Thank you, guys.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Unless you don't pay for a week's house.
The last one is our volleyball, it was our girls' volleyball, it's our seventh and eighteenth team. Um, they won district and state this year, only dropping one set. They didn't drop any sets the entire both tournaments, so they're awesome. Mr. Green's gonna call their names out as they go.
So just to say real quick, those girls, they've done excellent the whole season. Um, coachable, worked hard, so we're very proud of them. We have Tenlee Best. We have Alastia McKinney. Tatum Green. Shandra Wilson. Ally Deason. Nala Palmer. Astrid O'Hair. And I'm guessing two tonight, Bianca Hall and, um, Natalie Mullin. So these girls did a great job.
Congrats. Y'all just send you. Has to be an indication that it's important to write all this.
Good job.
Good job, girls.
Lane gonna take y'all first. Is that all, Steve?
That's it, just wanted to recognize these kids. As y'all can see, we had an incredible ball season, brought home three state championships and more to come soon.
Thank you, Steve. All right, there, I'll turn over to you if you got anything else from your report.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm gonna take it a moment. First of all, how gratifying it is to see these young people, our future, and their gladland abilities they have today. God bless. I want to reach out and thank those retailers, retail, and also proud citizens visiting the animal shelter Monday morning. We were down for one day of food for over a hundred animals. Thank God, the people reached out, they came in, like I said, retailers donated pallets in the vision of citizens throughout our city came together and provided food. We are standing now for our animals at the animal shelter. Proclamation tonight is on the National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. On National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day, we honor the memories of two thousand four hundred and three service members and civilians whose lives were cut short on that tragic day on December the seventh. Forces who withstood the attack and built the most capable fighting force in the world has ever seen. In the wake of the tragedy, these brave men and women, also known as the greatest generation, answered the call to defend freedom, justice, democracy across the Pacific, throughout Europe, and around the globe. Today, we carry forward their spirit of unity and their enduring res- risk to resolve them to protect the United States against those who would seek to do us harm. The Congress by law, one oh three dash three oh eight, has amended and designated December the seventh of each year as National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. Let us communicate the patriots who were wounded and who perished in December the seventh, nineteen forty-one, and continue to fulfill the sacred obligation to care for our service members, and the veterans and their families, the caregivers, and the survivors. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, now we have to adopt the agenda for tonight, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Now we need to approve the minutes of the regular sheet council meeting, handle number fifteen, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Laurie, second.
Second.
Lee Perryman, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, it's approved. For the minutes of the regular work session, handle number fifteen, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Lee Perryman, second.
Second.
Tiffany Nix, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
No old business, new business action that is necessary to consider ordinance authorizing operation of medical cannabis dispensaries and integrated facilities within the city limits of Silicaca. Uh, before I go further, I'd like to, um, recognize Randy Beavers, and if you would like to just give a quick synopsis of what that means.
Good evening, and thank y'all for having us. Uh, I am a representative and chief of staff of Aspire Medical Partners, and we are a research and development oriented medical cannabis operator. Um, and we are seeking to locate our integrated facility and our oriented facility here in Silicaca. Uh, we anticipate, uh, once the market is stabilized, the creation of a hundred to a hundred and fifty jobs, and, uh, to house our research and development efforts here in Silicaca, helping to bring partners like Hudson Alpha, Southern Research, and Alabama A and M, uh, into, um, into the fold and to, to help us do the work that we anticipate doing here. Uh, that facility would be designed to cultivate and process medical cannabis. It is a high-security protocol facility, um, that will be, um, ultimately not open to the general public, but to our employees, our, you know, partners and vendors, and our research collaborators, um, and then select visits, um, you know, on an absentee basis. And we're here to answer any questions, we'll elaborate further.
Yeah, that's good. Appreciate it, I just wanted to make sure I didn't sound crazy, so that was good, appreciate it. And he'll be here afterwards to follow up, and I'm sure there may be some other questions, so.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
We've been hand in hand, he's been willing and meaning, and I know he's from over in Georgia, and he's come back day after day to meet all of us individually, and talk to others and partners in the, in the city, so I appreciate the effort, um, and the things you put into the last few months with us.
Thank you.
So in order to consider this, we have an ordinance two-two-four-nine dash two-two, need introduction.
I'll introduce.
Nate Brewer, introduct, introduces. Uh, to take action, uh, we need a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Um, now to need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Action is necessary to adopt an ordinance declaring property at four oh seven Old Main Avenue surplus, no longer needed for municipal purposes. I apologize, that is gonna be pushed off to the next meeting, I should've marked that earlier. We have some contractual language to fix on that. Um, eleven action that is necessary to approve resolution expanding health and dental insurance benefits for retirees effective January one, twenty twenty-three. To consider this meeting, have a resolution seven-five dash two twenty twenty-two, kind of introduction.
I'll introduce.
Introduce, all in heath. Um, in order, we need to suspend the rules, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Laurie, second. Second.
Second.
Tiffany Nix, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now motion to approve. Tiffany Nix, second.
Second.
Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, it's approved. Action is necessary to approve, uh, adopting the fiscal year twenty-three general fund operating budget for the city of Silicaca. Revenues were nineteen million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, four thirty-eight and eighty cents. Expenditures were nineteen million, seven sixty-eight, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty cents, including interfund transfers and authorizing associated agency contracts for services. It's purport is mayor authority to execute associated contracts on behalf of the city. To consider, we have the resolution seven-six dash twenty twenty-two, may I have an introduction? Tiffany Nix, now motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Lee Perryman, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, now to approve, motion to approve.
Motion.
Laurie, second.
Second.
Tiffany Nix, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, it's approved. Action is necessary to accept a recommendation from inside engineering awarding bid for Hickory Street drainage project to Calypse, Calypse Construction Company, as the low responsive bidder, the amount of one billion, two thousand, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, less call savings of forty thousand, six hundred, for a total bid award of nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, and the funding is to come from American Rescue Funds. If to consider, we have a resolution seven-seven dash twenty twenty-two, may I have an introduction?
I'll introduce.
Nate Brewer. Now motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
And now motion to approve.
Motion.
Laurie, now second.
Second.
Lee Perryman, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, it's approved. Action is necessary to authorize a construction agreement for the transportation of cannabis program, better known as TAP project, with the state of Alabama for street skate improvements along Gordon Avenue from First Street to Third Street, and parking renovations on the east side of Alabama Highway twenty-one between First Street and Second Street. Federal funding of eight hundred thousand with required city match of two hundred thousand. Approval authorizes mayor I will sign agreement on behalf of the city, and to consider, we have a resolution of seven-eight dash twenty twenty-two, may I have an introduction? Tiffany Nix. Uh, need to, motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, now motion to approve.
Motion.
Lee Perryman, second.
Second.
Tiffany Nix, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, approved. Action that is necessary to approve a resolution setting date for public hearing to consider annexations on properties located three oh three Rocky Road, three hundred of the city night circle, ten Oak Street, and twenty-four eighty-five of Old Birmingham Highway. First available date for public hearing is January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. If to consider, we have a resolution seven-nine dash twenty twenty-two, can I have an introduction? Tiffany Nix, motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, approved, now a motion to approve.
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Tiffany Nix, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, approved. Action is necessary to approve resolution seven-eight for a public hearing considering recommendation from the plan commission to amend the city zoning ordinance, that is two-two-two four A dash twenty relating to manufactured homes and old street parking. First available date for the hearing is January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. If to consider, we have a resolution eighty dash twenty twenty-two, can I have an introduction? Tiffany Nix, now motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, it's approved, now motion to approve.
Motion.
Uh, second.
Second.
Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, it's approved. Action that is necessary to accept a recommendation from lengthened architects to admit, to award bid for water damage repair at City Hall to MJ Brooks and some construction incorporated as the low and responsible bidder, with a base bill of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four. Also adding bid alternates to install fire alarm systems at a sum of one hundred and two thousand, seven hundred, and another alternate for new investigator offices with a sum of sixty thousand, five hundred, funded from the insurance proceeds and city government trust funds. Am I correct, Ken? So if to consider, we have a resolution eighty-one dash twenty twenty-two, can I have an introduction?
I'll introduce.
Tiffany Nix, now a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Lee Perryman, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, now motion to approve.
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, approved. Action is necessary to amend the agreement with GOV deals, adding financial settlement services, authorizing GOV deals to collect all future auction fees from successful bidders on behalf of the city, including a twelve and a half percent buyer's premium fee. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Lee Perryman, second.
Second.
Tiffany Nix, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, it's approved. Action is necessary to authorize the purchase of a train HVAC gas electric vehicle fuel package heat pump for Lake Howard, the caretaker's house from Cobra Heating and Air, cost of nine thousand, four hundred dollars. Funding is from Lake Howard, um, recreational authority funds. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Laurie.
Second.
Nate Brewer, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, approved. Action is necessary to approve twenty twenty-three city council meeting schedule and holiday schedule, no changes have been made, same as this current year, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Lee Perryman, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, it's approved. Action is necessary to approve travel and training expenses for police recruit Tristan Olson to attend the basic training police academy at the Alabama Law Enforcement Academy January second through April sixth, twenty twenty-three, tuition of five hundred. The academy will pay five hundred upon successful graduation, food and lodging expenses of three thousand, ammunition of two ninety-nine. Total estimated expenses are four thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, approved. Action is necessary for, to approve travel and training expenses for firefighters Harmon Kelly, Shelby Burner, Clay Upchurch, Tony Lester, um, Logan Blake, instead of Clint Payton, swap that out. Matt Carpenter and Fire Inspector Chad Tolan to participate in the national child passenger safety certification course sponsored by the Silicaca Fire Department, December twelfth through fifteenth, registration fee of ninety-five each. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, approved. Action is necessary to approve travel and training expenses for police department investigators Chris Vincent and Josh Morris to extradite prisoner from Florida, travel dates unknown at this time, estimating, estimated expenses for Vincent and Morris are fifty each for meals of fuel, reimbursement of a hundred. Um, estimated meal expenses for prisoner, um, but look, two fifty. Motion by, or may I have a motion?
Motion.
Laurie, second.
Second.
Nate Brewer, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, approved. Uh, we have a couple of add items here, um, action that is necessary to approve a revised MOU with Blue Bell currys that will be for the purchase of city property located on West Fourth Street. MOU provides terms for both parties to enter into a real estate contract and authorizes mayor Howard to sign MOU on behalf of the city. Uh, action repeals the previous MOU approved by council at the eleventh, uh, November fifteenth meeting, adding revisions recommended by Blue Bell and city attorney. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, approved. Action is necessary to adopt an ordinance to amend a business license, ordinance number two-two-zero-six dash eighteen, to add a NAICS code for wholesale beer wine combined to current business license schedule. If to consider, we have ordinance twenty-two fifty-one dash twenty-two, may I have an introduction?
I'll introduce.
Laurie, this can't be something out of ordinary, just in addition to the current. Um, but motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, now motion to approve.
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, approved. Action is necessary to approve recommendation of mayor general title and the request of, at the, and the request of interim director, building services department might west on the rule forty hours unused vacation time from twenty twenty-two over to twenty twenty-three due to severe staffing shortage. Action allows, um, personnel policies and procedures checkered nine one four, section one one three. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, it's approved. Action is necessary to approve additional accounts payable invoices received for fiscal year twenty twenty-two in amount of two thousand, two hundred and eighty-three, eighty-five dollars and thirteen cents, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, it's approved. Action is necessary to approve number one accounts payable invoices received to date in amount of four hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixteen cents, motion? Tiffany Nix, may I have a second?
Second.
Nate Brewer, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, it's approved. Now it's time for everybody to address the council, no action will be taken in this meeting. If you have to come to the podium, state your name. And address. Alright, there's no action, anybody else have anything further?
I would like to congratulate Leaning Comer Tigers on going to the finals for the state championship in two-eight. Adam Fossey and his crew have done an amazing job over there, and I don't think they've been since nineteen ninety-five. I think, I was five years old, I know he was five, so that's a big accomplishment for them, and a big accomplishment for our city, and I hope that we can get them on, uh, the agenda to maybe really. And I hope that we can get them on, uh, the agenda to maybe recognize them. I know it's short, no, maybe January, February or something.
Yeah, we can definitely make that happen.
The Christmas parade is Thursday at six o'clock downtown.
Anything else to add, uh, add to that more or anything else going on further?
Um, no. Uh, Biggie Comer football team will be the grand marshal.
The grand marshal parade?
Jesse and Priscilla Cleveland.
Okay. Awesome. Alright, without anything further? What? Maybe so.
Good thing Chams King Public Theater, um, December fifteenth. To discover the final.
Yes, we have a final public meeting. Chams King to the Master Plan Project, Recreational Project, December fifteenth. Here. Six.
Sixteen.
I think it is six o'clock, yes.
Six o'clock.
Fifteenth, right here.
December fifteenth. Alright, motion. Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Laura Heath, all in favor?
Yay.
Time of the gentleman, five fifty-nine.